I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Boogington Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231 laws of 1975. The notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were perfectly posted and made available to the public. Mrs. Barta?
Here.
Mr. Brandner?
Here.
Mrs. Cabana?
Here.
Mr. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Hermy?
Here.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. LeVar? Mrs. McBride? Mrs. Nwikwe?
Here.
Also present, Dr. Angelo Lo, Superintendent President. I do not see our student representative, but we have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. At this time, we have a presentation by Charlene Pearson, our Senior Field Representative from the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the topic will be the role of the school board and curriculum.
So as the board continuing its quest to maintain its certification and get training together as a board team, this was one of the topics then that was identified as something for the board to kind of come to that common understanding or have that common language about. So going to the board's role in curriculum, what really one of the things we'll see is that it's really kind of limited, that it's based on what's in statute. So we're just kind of going to look at that and please feel free to stop at any time or ask questions at any time. So one of the things that I thought was interesting is that the Department of Ed had a definition about curriculum, and it's probably been maybe like one of the broadest definitions I've seen because a lot of times we just think kind of more about like kind of just the textbooks and kind of the learning that's taking place, but it really looks at it from a bigger, broader perspective of that, of saying the entire range of experiences that children have at school, and so that it would include making sure that we have compliance with the standards, we have objectives at each grade level, we have assessment practices and benchmarks, and resources available. So it considers all of that as we talk about curriculum, saying that that's all of the things that it encompasses. And then I thought it was interesting too that they talk about it saying, don't think about this as a list, but think about this as kind of the experience that we want for our children, what's the philosophy that we are trying to instill in our students and making sure that we have our focus on student achievement and looking at this as one of the tools or the ways to do that. So the state also then helps us break it down a little bit more and said so that it would include all the materials, the text, the lessons, the activities, all of everything that goes into instructing our students, and then taking it, kind of breaking it down a little bit more and said, okay, well, what is that framework then? So looking at what are the courses of study, what are the concepts that we're going to cover, and really it's all based on the state's standards. We'll see in a minute that really what we're held accountable to is our curriculum aligned with ensuring that our students have the framework that they need to learn the state's standards. And then like it says, the math is kind of tying in all of this together with timelines, as we talk about scope and sequence, what are we doing when, that's all part of the math process. So just kind of to look at the history that we went to, said that in our Constitution in 1875 is when New Jersey first came up with that, making sure that all of our students have access to a thorough and efficient education. And we really still use that standard now to drive our work, and that's really what the state's standards is supposed to be accomplishing, is making sure that that is the case. Then from New Jersey, we know how important local control is, right? That we have, people think it's from other states, think it's funny that we're such a tiny state, but we have 580 school districts, right? Whereas some states, it's like big regional districts, or like one county is a district versus New Jersey here where it really is localized, but that's really what gives boards, such as your board, the ability to make policy that benefits your local district. Then in 1996 is when the first standards came out from the state, so essentially saying that it described what all students should know and be able to do by the time you left the school district. And then felt the need to kind of take that and kind of move it and make it a little more modern by saying, okay, now that we know that as much as we need to teach our children things, more importantly, we're preparing them for whatever that next phase in life is. So really holding us accountable then to making sure that they are ready. Do they have the skills that they need for either college career, whatever their journey is, making sure then that we have given them the skills to be prepared for that journey. So from a board's standpoint, we took it and just really said like, what is the basic basically? If you could just break it down of saying, what is our role, recognizing that we are the representatives of the community, and making sure then that we are making sure that the work that's taking place in the district is really representing the values and what it is that our community wants to see for its students. So essentially saying that we are required to approve kind of what's being taught, then looking at, as we look at how our students are doing, making sure that what's being taught is being learned, and then did we provide the resources? Did we make sure that our staff has professional development? Does our budget provide for the things that are needed in order for our students to be successful? So basically breaks our role down to just kind of that really basic premise. So when I said that it was really our role is limited to a few things and it's based on statute, so this is that statute then that kind of holds us accountable, essentially saying, board, this is your role, saying, no course of study shall be adopted or altered except by the recorded roll call majority vote of the full membership of the board. And even would take it like say tonight, if you've got a couple people missing, it would still, so that's the difference of versus just who's there, the quorum of who's present. In this case, it is the full membership, so kind of taking it to that level of saying, we think that it's that important that we need to make sure then that this is one of those few things that requires the full membership of the board for approval.
Could I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So if you were voting and somebody was absent, then what would you do? Is that considered obscene or just absent?
So your majority, so like say if only seven people were here on some things, the majority might be four, because you're a nine-member board and say there's only seven people here, your majority is five.
So you just go by majority and you just mark that person as absent?
Five yeses.
Yes.
Five yeses. So if you have five people here, three people voted no, fails. Five people voted yes to the quorum, fails.
Understood.
Good question. So then, so that was the statute, then the code then that goes along with that statute, said, okay, so this is how we're going to kind of break your role down, board, and say, in order to accomplish that statute from the board, this is what we expect of you, and said that you have to make sure that the curriculum is designed so that all students, that's how I said it correlates to the standards, have the knowledge and skills specified by the standards, and then the state has added that you need to make sure that there are appropriate adaptations for students with disabilities, English-language learners, and students who are gifted and talented. So making sure that we're differentiating and we even mentioned that every student needs to be successful, it needs to have the opportunities that they need. So this then is how the state holds you as the board accountable for making sure that we are looking at our curriculum, looking at our students' needs from that whole level. Saying we have to implement programs that prepare all students in a broken down instead of your K to eight with the academic skills integral to success at high school courses, and then for high school, saying then the ultimate goal is success in college and careers. So we are helping on that journey of making sure then that when they leave here, they have the skills to be successful in high school, recognizing that at the end of that road, it's success in college and careers. And then from the board's perspective, making sure that we're responsible for the review and continuous improvement of curriculum, so saying if things are changing, if there's new information that's come out, if technology's changed how we do, if what we're seeing in the assessments would suggest that we should be doing something differently, that we should then be looking at making modifications based on that information. So that's pretty much what's in statute and code in terms of holding the board accountable or explaining the board's role in this process. So the other part of it is, so in addition to improving courses of study, you also need to approve the required course materials, the textbooks. So that is also in statute, and said textbooks shall be selected by the recorded roll call majority vote, same thing, of the full membership of the board, and said that the law only applies to what is required. So if there, whatever material is required for a course, it has to be approved by the board. If it's, like if the staff were to just say, pick something on, pick up a fiction novel and read it, then that doesn't have to be, if it's student self-selection, then you could possibly approve that, but if they're saying, we're all going to read this book this year, then that book has to be approved by the board. And so when this law was passed, obviously, they didn't have any sense of where we would be right now in technology and the digital access to materials, but said that in the spirit of the law, it would apply to any media regardless if it's digital or not. If it's required as used by the students, then it would need to be approved by the So what holds us accountable then? So we said, okay, we saw what's in statute, we saw what's in code, so we know what's expected of us, so what holds us accountable to doing that? And similar to anything else, the accountability comes through CUSAC, right, the state's monitoring system. So this then is kind of what holds us accountable of making sure then that all of our content areas, that it lists them all out, curriculum and instruction, again, are aligned to the standards in accordance with the department's curriculum implementation timeline. And then look at then what we're held accountable, and some of the things we kind of just talked about, of making sure that we're meeting those grade level expectations, that we've made those accommodations that we talked about for our special education students, our English-language learners, students at risk, gifted and talented, and students with 504 plans, responsible for making sure that our students were assessing their progress, what those materials are, and then, again, that pacing guide that we talked about. But then the state also is saying, okay, in order to fully implement the standards, we've added some 21st century skills, we've integrated some technology, there's an importance on career education and then making sure all of these connections are being made. So this is kind of the things then that CUSAC is looking at to make sure that this is what we're doing as a district and that these are the things that we're focusing on. So in addition then, we have policies then about curriculum. So we, as much as we look at, seeing that kind of statute and code limited us to basically saying, we just approved these things and these things require our approval, how are we going to carry that out? How are we going to fulfill that role? So took then your district policies that you have on curriculum and to kind of then take this role and expand it a little bit more. So we know then that we have to have a policy, recognizing that we're required to approve curriculum, that we have a policy that looks at that, and we're going to look at these policies a little more detail in just a second. You have a policy about designing it, your curriculum, and then those curriculum guides. So those are three policies that you as a board have on curriculum. So what are some of those things in those policies? So one of the things that is in your policy that is above and beyond what's required is that every year at your rework, I guess you have like a mid-year rework meeting, right, in June, so every year at that June meeting, you annually adopt all of your existing courses. So the reason you would do that, we saw that we only have to approve them if they're being developed or if there's any significant changes to them to comply with statute, then your policy takes it a step farther and says, okay, we want to make sure that you've looked at this, so every year in your policy, it says that you are adopting your existing courses, and then it kind of spells out and said, okay, in order to be in compliance with your curriculum policy, that this is what was tasked to the board, with the superintendent being tasked to making sure you're having that regular review, making revisions as necessary, having that list typically on your website of what your courses are. So kind of again, pointing out what those roles are. In terms of development, again, there's this next policy, making sure from the board's perspective, that we're aligned with the standards, that we are judging when new courses are put before you, that you have a list of criteria, we're going to look at that in just a minute, that you use to identify them, and then importantly, making the distinction that from the board's perspective, we are not involved in the development of the curriculum. So your policy makes it clear that the curriculum development is the work of your staff, and the board then needs to approve it and then make sure that it is aligned to the standards and that it is providing for the needs of all of the students. So we're kind of the approval and the oversight, but making it clear that it spells out specifically that we're not involved in the development. So as we look at then, okay, again, it's still kind of like not that clear really, like what's our role, what do we do, how are ways that we can be involved in this process? Again, as we set goals, when we have our strategic plan that we're going to be looking at, when we're setting our annual goals, even when we're looking at our board goals, of making sure, are we in alignment? Is the work that we're doing with our curriculum, is it helping support kind of these goals and these expectations that we have for our students? And then making sure that, like I said, everything is linked and in alignment, making sure that our budget provides for the work that needs to be done. Typically, when you develop new curriculum, there's a cost for purchasing materials, and then it's important that our staff is adequately trained and has the support that they need, so making sure from the board's perspective that we have provided that support that would be necessary in order for this to be successful, and recognize that it might be ongoing, that sometimes it's going to take more than a year or so to get this up and going. And then looking at, making sure, we know as a district that we should have some kind of an evaluation process, that we're kind of held accountable to like a five-year curriculum review cycle, just to make sure that we're always looking at in updating our curriculum, our portions of it, of looking at it, and again, making sure that we're in alignment. And the state, as it continues to make changes, that's kind of what poses a challenge for us too. I know I just saw that right now, the state is looking at making changes to both the ELA standards and the math standards. So they have, they go through a process of holding public hearings when they are making changes to standards. So I saw next week is a regional somewhere, not that far from here, a hearing that you can, people can come and say their thoughts about the proposed changes to the standards. So we know then that this is in the works, so whenever these changes get adopted, we are then going to have to look and see, okay, what do we need to do to our curriculum then to make sure then that it's in alignment with whatever these proposed changes or whatever these adopted changes will end up being? So it's a constantly kind of evolving process that as much as we're looking at our curriculum, the state is always looking at its standards then, which then requires us to look at our curriculum, so it's kind of a cycle. So as we look at then, again, what can we do? We know that when we set district goals, I say always at least one should be on student achievement, right? That's what we do, that's what we're here for, making sure then that we are continuing to work together to advance our students, making sure we're aware of what the laws are, what the requirements are, that student achievement should really be the focus of what we do. If I'm sitting in the audience at your board meeting, I should be able to tell that this is what's important to you as a board, that these are the things that we're talking about, this is what we're concerned about, and making sure that we have, again, that importance of giving our staff the resources to do the work that needs to be done. So this is in your policy where I said, where we established that there should be some criteria when new programs are being developed, that these are the questions then that you have listed in your policy of saying, okay, this is our checklist. If something new is being proposed to us, this is what we should be asking, or these are the questions that we've identified that we are going to ask about this particular new proposed course. So just wanted you to be aware then that you have information in there. So as much as we are not, you know, adopted, we are not the ones that are developing the curriculum, we, like I said, have identified some criteria as listed in your policy of questions that we would be asking, just to, again, make sure that we are performing our oversight of making sure, is it, are we doing our job? Is it in alignment with our standards? Are we providing accommodations that we're held accountable to? So just making sure then that those things are in place. So one of the things that, anyone have any questions about that before I go? Okay, so one of the things that happened too is that there was just recently, somebody had asked the school ethics commission for an advisory opinion related to this. So we know that an advisory opinion, that one of the things that we as school officials can ask the school ethics commission before something takes place, how would you rule on this? What would you think about it? What would you say about it? So you would let me know ahead of time whether you would consider it to be a violation or not, so that I can use that to guide my conduct, and if you think, and if the school ethics commission thinks that the rest of us would benefit from learning that, they can vote to make it public and publish it on their website so that we can use that as guidance to guide our conduct. So this was a situation where somebody just, it's like, I have like three examples up here of rulings that just came out within probably the past month or so. So this one really just came out a couple weeks ago, where they published, made public, an advisory opinion where someone asked, would an individual board member violate the School Ethics Act if they voted affirmatively to refuse to implement the new state standards for the comprehensive health and PE? And then they asked the second part of the question, where typically we would ask parents and families, if you didn't want to participate, that the typical option is to opt out. This board member said, what if we did the reverse and assumed everybody was out, and you then would have to ask to opt in? So the school ethics commission kind of went back to what we just talked about and said, okay, board, it's in statute that says that you're required to ensure that the curriculum and instruction provided to students aligns with the standards. That's what you are required to do. So you are required to abide by the Code of Ethics that says, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools, and that desired changes shall be, let's see the whole slide, right, shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures, and failure to comply could lead to a decision that supports a violation of this standard. So essentially saying that this is what we hold you accountable to, of making sure that boards, that you are making sure that your curriculum supports the state's standards. So if you were to do anything that would stop your district from being, if you would do anything that would preclude your students from being able to have all of the knowledge and the information they need about the state's standards, saying that that could potentially be considered a violation because you're being asked to uphold that. So just kind of making it clear, clarifying that responsibility. So kind of helps put it into practice to let us see how we are held accountable.
So I'm just contemplating this. So if a board member felt that way, then the proper action on their part would then be to use their experience and their position as a board member to then lobby through the state, but you can't, right? Would that be the right thing for someone to do?
Right, and that's kind of what they said, that through the legal and ethical procedures, and they even gave that example of, okay, folks, if you really were concerned about this, in 2020 is when we were holding these public hearings on these standards, so that was your time, to kind of speak up, voice your concerns, voice what you had to say, and then we've seen some boards that passed resolution, so saying that you might have, if you feel strongly, then use, like you say, the legal and ethical ways then to make that point.
So is it even optional then that families opt out of it, if it's a standard and regulation?
So that is one of the, you know...
That's a separate question, I know that's not like for us.
But that is an option that the state made available.
Okay, that's nice.
Okay, any other questions about that one? So then I have a couple other ones that don't really relate to curriculum, but they just came out again like a couple months ago or within the last month or two, and they are really kind of game-changing a little bit in terms of evidence that we, or information that we're getting from the state, so I figure while I'm here, there'll probably be some more time, I want to always make sure, the state says that not knowing about something is not an excuse for violating, and so making sure that we know these things, and I thought that they're interesting cases that we really haven't seen before. So this is an actual case that happened where, one of them's a case and one of them is another advisory opinion. So this one asks if the School Ethics Act would be violated, okay, so this one is an advisory opinion, if they as a private citizen answered on social media operational questions about how the district functions. So in this case, there was a board member who said that they were like on Facebook or on different things, and if someone asked a question about the school district and they thought it was just an innocuous question, that it's already been discussed at the board meeting, that there was no problem them posting and answering that question, and said that there were so many different groups out there, that somebody said, well, can we just kind of combine and put all these together and just make one Facebook group that's kind of the Board of Education answering Q and A with the public and the Board of Education? So this board member said, can I do that? Would there be a problem with me doing that? So again, the school ethics commission, we're starting to get before, they weren't giving us much help really, guidance on social media, so now this is probably, again, some new guidance that we hadn't really seen before, of saying, okay, board members, we get, you're a private citizen, you don't lose your First Amendment rights, that's something that's afforded to you, but what's different about you is that you are a public official, and as a public official, you are held accountable to the Code of Ethics all the time in everything that you do all the time. So in that case, said then that you have to make sure then that you are always subject to the Code of Ethics, the provisions of the Act. So it also says that one of the tenants of the Code of Ethics is that we can only act on comments or situations at a board meeting after failure of an administrative solution. So that's one of the tenants of the Code of Ethics. So this is kind of saying, okay, here, if we were to look at this situation, board member, that you just proposed to us, you're essentially telling us then that you would be making comments at a time and place other than at a board meeting, which specifically says in the Code of Ethics that you can't do that until only here and after failure of an administrative solution. And then it says that you would have to make it clear, again, that it's you, the private citizen, they have a disclaimer that we should use, saying that this is me, I'm speaking on my own behalf, I'm not able to speak on behalf of the board, or not authorized to speak on behalf of the board. or not authorized to speak on behalf of the board. But saying that your actions have to back it up. So saying that although you might want to provide information to the public that you feel stakeholders would find useful, it likely like wouldn't really make much sense for you to say, I'm not speaking as a board member, when here you are answering questions about the board. So saying you, in a sense, have rendered your disclaimer meaningless because your actions would suggest otherwise, that you are in fact speaking as a board member. So saying it would be likely that everyone in the community knows you're a board member. And if you were to be answering these questions, the community could, as a private citizen, would likely attribute your statements being made in that capacity as a board member. So saying even if, and here they even gave the example, if you only ever provide links to publicly available information, which again would seem like, why not, right? That it may not immunize you from being the subject of ethics complaints. So kind of making it clear that as much as you think that you're doing a service, that you're helping, that you're whatever, that you essentially could be compromising the board. Essentially saying that as a board member, if we are taking independent action, that independent action has the potential to compromise the board. And so that then is also another tenant of the Code of Ethics that you would violate. So just wanted to share that with you. And then there's one more that just came out a couple of days ago. So this is a situation that most of us are familiar with, that the Morris County District here that was in the media lot, right? For wanting to remove Columbus Day from its calendar. So in this situation, it said that there was, the people that, this was ethics charges that were filed and the board member was found guilty. So in this, the people that filed ethics charges said that it was a walk-on resolution, that while you have your agenda here and you can read the resolutions and the public can read the resolution, the resolution to eliminate Columbus Day was made on, you know, sitting at the table, wasn't on the agenda. So said the other board members didn't have time to prepare for the community wouldn't know to come prepare to share their comments about it. So said it, you know, was clear that the way that this was handled resulted in a huge public outcry with tremendous backlash. So the two people that filed the ethics charges against this board member said that these two people were kind of outspoken members of the community who were concerned about this action. So they invited this board member to meet with them. So it was just this one board member who walked on this motion and these two members of the public who ended up ultimately filing the ethics charges. So they essentially wanted to find out, why did you do this? Like, what's behind all this? Why did you bring this up? So what it came down then is they made a whole list of things that they thought that this board member perhaps, you know, could potentially be found in violation of the Code of Ethics. And out of the whole list, this was the one and only thing that the school ethics commission said is going to stick. So the one thing was then saying, you had, you should not have had this meeting by yourself with these two members of the public and saying that this meeting was considered outside the scope of your duty as a board member. And by you having this meeting and taking this independent action, it had the potential to compromise the board. And then goes back again to that letter J that I talked about just a minute ago about saying, acting on complaints before there's a failure of an administrative solution. So saying that this board member is required to refer all complaints to the district's administration and is prohibited from resolving or attempting to resolve a complaint at a time other than at a public board meeting and prior to the failure of an administrative solution. So essentially saying that this board member kind of took this whole situation into their own hands when it was, you know, such a large situation and didn't, instead of saying, nope, I'm sorry. You know, they said, this board member should have said, I'm sorry, I'm not going to meet, you know, thank you for asking, but what, who you really need to talk to is the administration. That that's then who resolves our issues. That's who, you know, as we go through the chain of command, that is the process that you should follow. Not trying to seek me out as an individual board member for fact, you know, thinking as it's suggesting that I might be able to do something about it. So it's said that in effect, by this board member doing this and perhaps attempting to resolve the complaint at a time other than at a public meeting and prior to the failure of an administrative solution, that they could, you know, potentially undermine the administration's authority and their ability to resolve and address it. So essentially giving us a heads up that anytime we try and get involved before we have let the process play out the way that we are legally required to have it play out, of addressing it at a board meeting only after a failure of an administrative solution. That if we were to do that in any other time, that we, like I said, are undermining the administration's authority to resolve or address the concerns. And really from our part, it's really hard then to hold the superintendent or the administration accountable, right? Because we've been involved in the process sooner. We obtained the outcome, we stirred up the pot, so made it more difficult. So it said this also imposes an unnecessary strain and hardship on the relationship between the administration and the board. And said, and given the public outcry, it said, you know, if this needed to be discussed, it should have been discussed publicly by the full board at a public meeting so that everyone had the right to this information rather than just these two people because of how much it impacted the public. So at the end of the day, that board member, sorry, can't see this down here, was found to have violated letter E of the Code of Ethics, which is taking that independent action that, you know, could compromise the board and then was given a reprimand for this action.
I have a question, Charlie. Is the issue really that this individual met with the community members or just didn't follow the chain of command in resolving the issue?
Well, it's kind of both. Like, because they met with the community members, then they circumvented the chain of command. So that was the action that circumvented the chain of command. Like, they essentially said, you should have said no to this request. And that you should have said, this is how this should be handled. Instead, you ignored that. You had a meeting. And one of the things that this board member didn't know that it says in the decision is that these two people were secretly recording this meeting that they had with this board member, so.
It sounds like the issue is because the individual knew what the topic was for the meeting, not necessarily like their meeting. Because you can meet, I'm just wanting to clarify, like, we can meet with people within the community, but if we know the topic is going to be something related to the board, we either say not discussing that or if it's an issue, you need to go through the administration, the chain of command, come to the public board meetings, and it may or may not be discussed there. But that is like, otherwise I'm not discussing that topic. But it's not necessarily like you meeting with community members.
Right, right. In this case, they were having a meeting specifically to this issue, right? But just, you know, kind of, again, like, you know, I will hear, sometimes hear from other boards, oh, well, like, you know, this board member holds court in the Starbucks all the time and has people come and tell them their problems or, you know. So this is kind of clarifying that what is our role? And when do we get involved? And saying like, we don't get involved until it's here and it's failure of an administrative solution. So even when people come to our board meetings, a lot of times they are sometimes, you know, saying, well, instead of going through the whole chain of command, I'm just going to come to the board meeting when the administration may not have had the opportunity to develop a solution or to go through the chain of command. So essentially holding us accountable to both pieces of this, of not getting involved until after failure of an administrative solution and essentially doing it here. I mean, there was another case earlier this year where a board member responded to a parent concern apparent in email. And again, said the same thing, like, that's not power where you're supposed to respond to parent concerns. That again, you wait until it happens here and only after failure of an administrative solution. So even just happening here is not enough. It has to be both pieces before the board gets involved. So we really have to be kind of mindful of what our responsibilities are. This is probably one of the clearest ways that I've, you know, seen it spelled out or, you know, ways that they're starting to kind of show that accountability now, so. That was all that I had for you. I don't know if you have any other questions about this or curriculum or anything else while I'm here? And I am going to probably hang tight at your, I mean, I have to be somewhere in about another hour or so. So rather than going home and back, if you see me sitting in the audience here, it's, I'll get to watch you in action, so, yeah. I don't know if you want me to do it in the cooker or.
As always, thank you very, very much, always important. Thank you, Charlie.
Uh huh.
Okay, we do not have a student representative. So that brings us to board business motion number one. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, questions on the adoption of board business motion number one? Will those two people say aye?
Aye.
And if they say no? Any objections? Okay, thank you. That brings us to administrative reports, starting with the business administrator's world secretary.
Just a couple of things, and I know the community chairs are going to report out, but since the last board meeting, the 2023-24 school budget was approved by the county business administrator and the county superintendent on March 30th, as submitted. As I reviewed my budget presentation on March 15th, the district received an additional $68,927, state aid. The budget was at the 2% revenue cap. Although we were able to exceed, as I explained in my presentation, because of healthcare cost adjustments, we chose not to do so. We had, had in the past, the ability to do so and as well, we chose not to. Administrative costs were also well within the state's acceptable limits. The next step in the process is the final approval by the board at the public hearing on May 3rd. The finance committee met recently to discuss the budget, which included a detailed explanation of the accounts the Department of Education includes in the administrative cost calculation. It is important to note that the addition to, in addition to personnel salaries, the majority of the accounts include many fixed costs, which tend to increase annually, such as telephone, internet service, liability insurance, premiums, auditor, attorney fees, employment advertising, financial personnel software, annual licensing, firewalls, antivirus agreements, student information software, graduation expenses, and New Jersey school board dues, just to name a few. And they don't have, as we discussed, a real relationship to enrollment. The committee was in agreement that the budget information submitted to the county superintendent for approval was reasonable. The finance committee also discussed the summer partial roof replacement project, cost and timeline. And you'll see on the agenda this evening, there is a resolution authorizing the school architect to prepare the necessary documents for submission to the NJ DOE so the project can proceed as planned over the summer and as included in the school budget. The facility transportation committee also met to review the proposed summer roof replacement project. And we toured the building to discuss future facility projects and needs. The committee also discussed the need to go out to bid for contracted bus routes due to the fact that first student was not renewing the existing routes. So since then, we, the route information was sent to the educational services commission so that they can put together a joint bid with Kinalon because Kinalon's start times, we've been in unison with them for the past, you know, number of years. So in order to secure a bid with probably the best prices, because they can tier all those buses, we're letting them do it, we're doing it as a big joint bid. The board also has the authority to approve our routes in the best interest, regardless of what Kinalon may do. But that's just one way, to use the education service commission to, you know, work collectively and collaboratively with other districts. And this will hopefully result in better pricing for both districts. That's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Angelou.
Okay, good evening, everyone. A few things to report. Next week, I will be interviewing candidates for our second part-time Class III officer with Chief Ketchave. We're hopeful to have our officer in place to start the new school year in September. And obviously, I will give the board more details as we finalize that. Just a reminder that we have announced three days to be given back from unused emergency closing days. And those days right now are Thursday, Friday, and Tuesday, surrounding Memorial Day weekend, the 25th of May to 26th and the 30th. The final give-back day will be announced later this month or early next month. I'm just holding on to it just in case there's an emergency that is not snow-related. But can stay with a degree of confidence, hopefully that we should be fine there. I have a very important Morris County Superintendent's roundtable meeting Friday with the County College of Morris. That meeting will focus on topics surrounding emergency operations and the New Jersey CUSAC process as we are being monitored next school year. And I will provide informational updates to the board afterwards. As the fourth marking period has officially begun, which is hard to believe, we continue to plan for all of our year-end activities, author days that we have upcoming, assemblies, field days, eighth grade trip, commencement information, et cetera. And I will be sure to keep everyone, including all of you, our families, et cetera, informed all. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. You will have had a chance to look at the nurses and the tenured support. And that brings us to commendations, Dr. Angelou.
Commendations for the evening, bravo! We can't thank the Education Foundation enough for all they did to give our students the fabulous opportunity to perform in the production of Annie Junior. What a wonderful show, maybe our best musical to date. All the performances were strong, from the acting to the singing to the dancing. A special thanks to all of those who helped, including all of those talented parents as listed. A special thank you to our show director, Harry Christian. He's from Pushcart Players. He is absolutely exceptional. He's wonderful with our kids. And we appreciate all that Harry and our parents do. Most especially, we want to thank Lara Derosha and Stephanie Wright for their tireless support of our students and the million details they juggle during play season. A round of applause also to Mrs. Bartel for the two concerts she produced this past month. The Music in Our Schools concert with pre-k to second graders is a perennial favorite. And the vocal musical concert for our third through fifth graders in select chorus was wonderful as well. We wish Mrs. Bartel all the best while she's out on maternity leave until September. Congratulations to the teaching staff on hosting parent-teacher conferences last month. It was a productive time for communication and feedback. Spotlight on student work for March in preschool. Charlie Gagliolo and Rayanne Mum in kindergarten. Giovanni Chiarburg, Chiabury, Tobin Flezak, Mila McIntyre, Colin Remich, and Riley Wu. In first grade, Ethan Valgavin, Josephine Cohen, Emma Talarchuk, and Elijah Vincenti. In second grade, Emma Choman, Michael Kern, Olivia Field, Nirvan Job, Declan McAndrew, Nate Schneidkraut, and Scott Tracy. And in third grade, Teagan Benitez, Lucas Brown, and Foster Shondell. To our Falcons of the Month for April. In fifth grade, Rayon Andakin. In sixth grade, Zoe Feit. In seventh grade, Georgie Babacwa. And in eighth grade, Sheila Vasquez. And those are our commendations.
Great, thank you very much. And you will have had a chance to look at correspondence. That brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Anyone from the public wish to adjust the board on agenda items at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to liaison reports, starting with the Mount Lake Board of Education.
So we've had two meetings, April 3rd and March 1st. They've also returned three unused snow days. So it's Thursday, Friday, Tuesday around Memorial Day. They're very close to making a final decision on the Wildwood principle. They have over 90 applicants, so it's more than that. They may have already decided this one. They're seeking grants where each half thought something was interesting in IT is that they're, so they're beginning to implement multi-factor authentication for their computers. And so that's a new, so it's kind of pushed by their insurance company. So next step in cybersecurity for the schools. They're rolling it out with the administrative team. And let's see, oh, within the community, Mountain Lake Education Foundation has their big event April 29th. Um, Student Matters, um, they had Maddie Gaskar at Prior Click, and it was a phenomenal success. Um, they are, have a wingman leadership program happening. In high school, they've got, um, they had on March 7th, college fair with, um, it was amazing. It was just, it was both gyms packed. It was a great opportunity to see what's next for the high school students. Um, their DECA had, well, it's probably a lot of the same stuff we might be talking about, so I'll let, I'll skip some of that for the student matters for Madison. Um, there were two presentations, one, uh, given by their athletic director, Hudson Wall, who's been helping, like, uh, high school sports, and, um, they had, they had a great season, a highlight by Boot Township was Isaac Bolinsky, who was first in the pole group, um, north first in the north group pole. Um, and, let's see, they had, uh, winning seasons in swimming, wrestling was 12 and 12. Um, there were two really nice presentations. Voice basketball coach, um, John, John Baduk was there for 18 years. Joey Sluck gave a really nice talk and, um, and made some nice comments for, on behalf of the team. And he had over 500 career wins, and, um, the ski instructor or coach, um, Jeff Keith, coached for 38 years, just retired. And he was a teacher for 30 years. I think he and Mr. Bederman used to coach speed, uh, together, um, at one point. So he had 1,200 wins and bi-state championships, so I'm pretty sure of these ones. Um, they have the budget presentation, um, they have, um, kind of a large gap that they are working on, um, balancing, and they're doing, using some of the surplus from this year towards next year's budget, and they're doing a $300,000 health benefit waiver and about, uh, $400,000 in cuts to complete the, um, to balance the budget. Um, and their concerns for the following year is that they won't have the surplus or the health benefit waiver. So, um, that's difficult. So they're, um, keeping a very close eye on finances, um, need, oh, yeah, they're just saying that they need to, you know, save some, spend some money on facilities and, um, work on their long-range capital plan. Um, oh, um, just one interesting, uh, comment on some policies that they are working on is that the board was, um, asking for a policy for their seniors to be able to, to la, um, sign out without a parent. To, in order for a, a student to leave the school, they have to have a parent sign out. But then, a lot of times now, seniors, the parents have to, like, leave work and go sign them out, and then they both get in their own cars and leave. So they're working on trying to find compromise with the administration, because administration's very, feels strongly that, you know, we don't want this to be abused, you know, so the parents' security is very important, so they're working on a compromise. Um, okay, that's, what do you have in mind for that?
Great, thank you. At this time, we will go to the important student representative, Mrs. McBride.
Hi. Spring sports are full swing. Boys lacrosse is off to a great start with a record of four to one. Girls lacrosse has a record of two to three, but they are playing hard in a lot of close games that have gone into overtime. Boys tennis, baseball, softball, track and field, and boys golf, all have games by the rest of the week. The DECA club is headed to Nationals on Friday in Orlando. Good luck to everyone competing. Congratulations to senior Aaron Queso, who took part in the NAFME All Eastern Symphony Orchestra Concert this past weekend in Rochester, New York, where he earned first trumpet recognition. Congrats to the following 24 RBS students so far on their commitment to the following schools. Sammy Abrams, Desale University. Gavin Anadian, Lafayette College, where he'll be playing lacrosse. Stanley Bolinsky, West Liberty University. Oliver Bush, Clemson University. Aaron Queso, Rutgers University. Jimmy Elliott, University of Massachusetts Amherst, where he'll also be playing lacrosse. Brian Few, Virginia Tech. Caroline Florino, Wellesley College. Christina Fratorelli, University of South Carolina. Ben Kleiner, West Virginia University. Naomi Kleiner, West Virginia University. Sarah Levar, University of Toronto. Lily Mahan, Gettysburg College. Noah Nussbaum, Syracuse University. Alex Strupnagle, Providence College. Tia Circcio, University of South Carolina. Joseph Sluck, Penn State University. Gabby Spina, University of Wisconsin-Madison. Dorothy Yao, Princeton University. Muckley Elpo, University of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, we will understand if you have somewhere else to go, or, uh, welcome to stay or go, but thank you very much. It was a great report. And at this time, we have New Jersey School Boards Association, in which is Mr. Levar, who was not able to make it this evening, but he sent his report to me. Uh, excuse me if I, if I'm a little small. Uh, he starts out with Governor Phil Murphy signed legislation, A dash 4723 requiring that the Commissioner of Education, in conjunction with the New Jersey Commission on All-Cost Education, to craft and distribute a survey for public schools relating to educational instruction on the whole cost and genocide. The survey will measure how each school district is meeting the state's current requirement that every board of education include instruction on the whole cost and genocide in the inappropriate place in the curriculum of all elementary and secondary school students. Due to increased interest in a grant opportunity related to climate awareness education, the New Jersey Department of Education has announced a second identical grant opportunity for districts that are unable to submit a completed application for the original grant. The application deadline is 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM, April 28th, 2023. The anticipated average award amount for eligible districts is approximately $6,500. New Jersey school performance reports for the 21, 2021-2022 school year are available. While New Jersey schools are eligible to receive portable, high-efficiency particulate air filtration purifiers, and up to three corresponding replacement HEPA filters per unit at no cost from a state-sponsored vendor, New Jersey Department of Education will discontinue the Start Strong Assessment effective fall of 2023. So that concludes Mr. Levar's report. And that brings us to Morris County School Boards Association.
Um, the last meeting was held in late March. I was not able to attend, but they did do the unsung heroes awards. From what I hear, it was a nice tribute to those who won awards. Um, with that said, there was no distance conducted at that meeting. Um, the next meeting is on May 4th. It will be at Hanover Park. It's the year-end celebrations meeting, and all board members are welcome to.
Great, thank you very much. And let's see, where are we? Your Educational Services Commission, they met a week ago today. Uh, nothing, uh, outstanding to it, other than they conducted their usual business. And next is the Boot Township Special Education Parent Advisor Group. Mr. Johnson also unable to attend this evening, but he will have also sent his report. The Boot Township CPAG met on March 21st at the Rockaway Valley United Methodist Church. Items discussed were as follows. The group noted on bylaws, mission goals, and representatives. The group discussed the meeting between the CPAG parent leaders and Dr. Lendas and Mrs. Borges on March 21st, where they reviewed the parent survey and engaged in a good dialogue with the administration. The group reviewed the remaining 2023 calendar and discussed upcoming events before the end of the school year, specifically the overview of the special education process by Robert Ballard on April 18th, 5th, RBS. Robert Ballard is the school district's special education attorney. Additionally, there will be an upcoming presentation on occupational therapy at the next CPAG meeting on May 16th, which will include a parent listening session. This meeting will take place at the Rockaway Valley United Methodist Church at 7:30 PM. The final CPAG parent representative meeting with the school administration will come on May 23rd. The Green Day event is also scheduled for May 28th for the CPAG full sponsored recycling invention corner. Lastly, the group review the new CPAG website, which will be launched soon. And that concludes Mr. Johnson's report. Um, I, I attended the, the presentation last night, I think a couple board members did. It was a very, very informative and educational. And that brings us to the Township Education Foundation.
Okay, I will give a couple of updates here. So four kids classes started just this Monday, uh, 210 registrations, um, which is quite a lot of kids who came down to kids' mother's school, so that's great participation. Uh, the trucks program, I think we talked about it, kicked off, um, about two weeks ago before spring break on the 3rd. There's going to be five workshops, um, on the 21st. It's a new program that's been run by ZS Zero, essentially gives to students in the fifth grade, thinks it's a great idea. Um, they come up with a business idea plan, and everything that goes along with it, know how to get kind of a marketplace communities, uh, that they, they'll sell their products at on the June 1st, so pretty cool. Dr. Angelou talked about Annie Junior, um, obviously that was great, um, and I think probably led us to how it just went on. Um, third grade is doing Battle of the Books, ending, um, in May, and the kids are super excited and, um, super into it, and the BTF is actually going to host a whole-grade pizza party for the third grade, uh, class, has a role to also that. Couple of things, um, May 7th, bowling event for Mother's Day, golf event October 21, October 2023, still in the works, and the annual fundraiser will probably be on October 13th or 14th at the Mountain Lakes Club. And they have a meeting this morning, and I'm not sure whether that's, or is that tomorrow? Or is it tomorrow morning? Tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM. That's it.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the Rockaway Valley Movement School Association.
So the last meeting was April 5th. Main issue is there are a lot of vacancies in the HSA. The president, recording secretary, corresponding secretary, cultural arts, lunch committee person, upper-class liaison in Mountain Lakes, so some vacancies to fill. They had a successful ice skating event, um, a few weeks ago, and then there was Cello Fury at school, which was well-liked. In terms of big dates in the next few weeks, the next meeting for the HSA is May 2nd. There is a spring concert and ice cream social, which was posted on social media this week on April 25th. There is a Skyzone jumping party on May 1st, and there's an eighth grade mixer from 7:00 to 9:30 PM on May 5th, and, and May 9th, a seventh and eighth grade roller skating mixer event with Mountain Lakes. And that's it.
Great, thank you. As I'm listening to all this, the first week of May is very busy. That brings us to the Township of Boot and...
Just, uh, two things to report. Uh, I mentioned last time, the Rockaway River Cleanup is Saturday at 10:00 AM, and there is going to be the Pathways of History Tour, beginning of May, May 6th and 7th. And that's all.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Boot and Township Pre-Team.
Um, Boot and Scout Township Pre-Team is, um, carrying up for their May 23rd event, which will be, um, is run by, well, it's being helped, being coordinated, uh, I'm all sometimes, sorry. Alex Anian is, is Girl Scout, and she's helping coordinate it on behalf of the pre-Team. And we're hoping to have, like, uh, you know, like, native, uh, plants for sale. Um, we have the Garden Club coming, we have, um, uh, local vendors selling food, products. Uh, we have, like, uh, people who know Erica, um, I think she was like, right now, Domenico, she's coming doing, uh, her upcycling clothing. But there's also going to be presentations by Red Curds, um, and, uh, we have, uh, crafts going, so it's just gonna, it's gonna be a great event, and, um, we'll be putting out a lot more information in the next few weeks.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more. Thank you, thanks. Uh, this Sunday, 1 to 3, is they're doing a community cleanup in the garden, so getting it all ready, um, and we'll be doing up plots among interested parties, and if anybody in the community is interested in taking out part of a plot or a whole plot, we'd love that, so get it going and bring it out back to them.
Where can I get more information about it?
I think, I can probably just, yeah. Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you very much. That brings us to Facilities Transportation, which is the board's report.
Well, Mr. Murray touched on it a little bit, so I'm going to repeat it, um, just to give the Cliff Notes version, because some people did work in late, in case they missed it. So we did discuss the RBS bus schedules, which are going out for bid, will be grouped along with Kinnalon, and will be 40 routes in total, um, to be bid on. And we should have a motion on, we're hoping the May meeting for board approval for those routes and animal costs. The partial roof replacement is on tonight's, um, agenda, Facilities One. Um, just to note that this is a follow-up to last year's roof replacements. This year's a little larger, a little bit more involved due to some flashing requirements, which helps with drainage. Um, more information for those on the board is available in, um, the Facilities folder. And then the referendum planning, we just, uh, walked through the school to look at all the projects, um, from HVAC controls, electrical upgrades, boiler replacements, lighting, um, canopies, we walked through and took a look at all the current facilities, so that, we'll just start talking about this in a little bit more detail soon. We'll have, we will have eyes, have eyes on it, and we...
It's contagious.
Yes. And the repairs and upgrades that we're asking for. So those are three things, um, that we discussed, and again, Facilities One was one of those items.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to read the next thing? No, I'm just kidding. The next item on the agenda is Facilities Motion Number One. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Let Mr. Murray break the time. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Facilities Motion Number One, this is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions? That brings us to Finance. Uh, the Finance Committee met on April 17th at 8:00 AM, a little early. Um, the first thing we discussed was the budget presentation. Uh, Mr. Murray provided a background on the administrative cost of a calculation included in the budget presentation. The school district budget, including enrollment, is monitored throughout the school year by the NJ DOE through the county superintendent's office. The committee is, is confident in the budget information submitted to the county superintendent's office. We also reviewed the proposed school facilities projects for the 2023-2024 school year, included in the Facilities Transportation Motion Number One, which we just voted on. And with that, may I have a motion for Finance motions 1 through 5? Is there a second? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Finance motions 1 through 5, that's all, just in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to Personnel.
Back to me. Um, we met on April 4th. We discussed, uh, some chefing updates, uh, some advertisement for part-time behaviors position, should have days a week. The STEM technology education position interviews began last week. We discussed tenured and non-tenured positions for the upcoming school year, the typically on-demand June meeting agendas. Personnel Three, um, Mrs. Savage, uh, is on the agenda for approval as the assistant baseball coach. Personnel One, we discussed the homebound instructors. We also discussed a couple of other items. The Start Strong Assessment is being discontinued this fall. NJ CUSAC will require a site visit for the upcoming school year, and that timeframe is estimated between December and February. There are applied areas of district performance reviews, or DPRs. Score of a year bonuses need to be in compliance. We heard about one of those earlier this evening, and our training instruction program. In addition, fiscal management operations, personnel, and governance are also, um, assessed. And then our next meeting is on May 1st.
Thank you. And that brings us to Personnel motions 1 through 3. We have a modification...
I, yeah, there needs to be a modification.
Just in the date for Personnel Two, it's effective sooner, April 21st.
This Friday. So do I need to make a motion to amend it?
There wasn't a motion. We didn't motion it yet. So we made a correction before this.
Okay, perfect.
We avoided that. Technically. So with that, may I have a motion, uh, for Personal motions 1 through 3, with Personal motion Two as correct.
Um...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Um, actually, just, uh, for clarification, because I, I don't know much about, um, board certified behavior analysts, that type of position. So, um, they're, it's part-time, and, um, how, and just, how does that, how do they work within the child study team, like, is, is there something that's doing that now? That will now be up?
Program, can we share? Because that's also one program, and I don't know if they're going to go with it.
Oh, all right.
Not necessarily, I just haven't knew it is.
It is, I...
Oh, so I don't know if you were going to report on that, because the job description is on that...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Hold that thought.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the question is on the adoption of Personnel motions 1 through 3. This is a poll. This is Florida.
Yes.
Mr. Brandler?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Novic?
Yes.
Motion 13. Thank you. That brings us to Programming Curriculum. And the Programming Curriculum, we met on April 6th at 8:00 AM, also an early meeting. There are discussion items where the, that the Start Strong Assessment is being discontinued along our attempted to say goodbye Start Strong. The K through 12, there's also, let's see, K through 12 Information Literacy Education. The NJ DOE is creating learning standards. I attached a New Jersey School Boards article about that, that new curriculum. We don't think it's going to be, I think, available until next school year, we think, because they have to still develop the standards, but we'll keep our eyes on that. We reviewed the behaviors to end STEM job descriptions on Agenda Item, on the Agenda Items. We also, the school administration is exploring the development of a grades 5 through 6 Social Emotional Learning course for school year 23-24. This course would include topics such as coping skills, resilience, mindfulness, goal-setting, multitasking, and executive functioning. And then I wrote out NJ CUSAC, the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. I like the way that sounds. NJ CUSAC, we discussed the upcoming year, it's being monitored for the 23-24 school year. District Performance Reviews include five areas, which are Instruction Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. When you look at my meeting notes in the shared drive, I see some typos that I tried to glean over. With that, they have a, oh, you had a question?
Actually, I have just a couple, but so the SCL course for fifth and sixth grade that is, now I've said I'm a personnel, is that a personality?
Program.
Program, okay, thank you. Is that, is that a new standard or is that like, no, it's just a good, I mean, I think it sounds like a great purpose. One of the things I saw in the description of this, thinking a lot of the skills are coping, resilient, or self, but not necessarily communicating, like what you're, when you, I don't know, I just, I just found it very interesting, like that.
Of jobs.
Yeah, no, all right. And that's probably a topic for a minute. And then just would like to learn more about the Behavior Analyst position.
So right now, we contract the service for one day a week for our behaviorists and we're looking to increase that. And the individual that's currently in the position simply cannot do more than they are afforded right now. So we would like to have someone here work more frequently and someone is able to serve us both regular and special education students.
Excellent. Thank you.
And thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Sure, absolutely.
So the Information Literacy, is that for every grade? Is that something that would be taught by like librarians or by teachers?
Yeah, it is a K, it is a quick K through 12 curriculum and it's something that was recently, I guess, I think is actually legislated. The attachment, there's like a bill where the state legislature, they're assigned by the governor, approve these standards. So it's quite interesting, actually.
So do we, I was just curious, do we see that being another job for an LA teacher?
So it would be integrated throughout the curriculum and would also be taught by our media specialists. That's interesting reading. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? If not, that brings us to Program Motion Number 1. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? If not, the question's on the adoption of Program Motion 1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to Policy.
So just to report the policies that are on tonight or to be approved, I believe I went over the last meeting of what the changes were to update these policies. We met yesterday afternoon with some policies that'll be on for the next meeting in, or actually in May, I think will be on for the first grade. And that's it, I'll go over it when they're on and you guys have it to know.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Policy Motion Number 1.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the question's on the adoption of Policy Motion Number 1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions? And that brings us to Open Session Number 2. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects to board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record and all comments here will leave to five minutes. If anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter.
Okay, yes, we'll be thanks. Hi, Mary Leo, Quinborne Drive. I just have a couple of questions about the enrollment for next year and the projections, you know, you're not projecting going up that much. But in the total enrollment, you include in this year of 386, you include the pre-K, the MD and LLD students also. But if we took those out, there's really like 370 students in K through 8, correct?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so that's the numbers I have from you guys. So have we always reported that way, including the K8? Because, you know, as far as being, excuse me for being late, I work these days, you know, this late, so. So anyway, my question is, it's kind of like, being a resident of the town, it sounds like maybe we should separate that a little bit to members so we know that really there's 370 in the school this year, even though those are extra classes, they're not the mandated K to 8 like grades. But my other, but that's, that's beyond. My other thing was that this year we had 33 students in eighth grade with three sections. So that's 11 students in a section. So I personally have a little issue with that number. I don't understand why there's three. And if it's because it's a seventh and eighth grade team, there seems to be maybe a way we can work around that. And, and going for kindergarten with 46 with only two sections, it, the discrepancy just seems like a lot to me. Now, in kindergarten, did they have aides in those classes of 23? Does anyone know that?
I believe we do, at least one, if not two, yes.
So are they special education aides or are they actually classroom aides?
Mrs. Leo, what I would prefer is that if you're more than willing, I'm happy to correspond with you via email.
All right, well, this is just a public question. I'm not, it's not anything I'm being negative about, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
No, that's all. And I was just, you know, and knowing the number from kindergarten to first grade is going up next year, you anticipate it, we still don't think there's a need for the three sections. I didn't know if you guys just discussed that at all or if that's in your budget.
Administrative role of the board doesn't get involved in that.
So you don't at all?
I mean, if, to the degree that, you know, we.
I was on the board for 11 years, so I, you know, I know that.
Yeah, to the degree that, you know, it affects the budget if the super recognition comes that we need a teacher, we discuss it, but as far as the actual decision-making and that.
Where the teaching numbers go, there's, I think there used to be a board policy on, on grades and on class sizes, so.
Is that.
I don't know if we're still following that or if that has changed. So I just want you to be aware of that and maybe look into that, the board policy on class sizes.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and please reach out to Dr. Angelillo.
Sure.
If you have additional questions, thank you. Would anyone else wish to address the board on any matter?
Ellen Hardy, 24 Split Rock Road. As the public is encouraged to be invited in the budget process, I am here again to follow up on enrollment. I am writing to you as I have repeatedly asked the administration for an explanation of the increase of 31 students in the enrollment projection for 23-24. While I have asked Mr. Murray for a detailed explanation, I keep receiving qualitative responses to a quantitative question. So following the chain of command, I wrote to Dr. Angelillo on April 5th, but I never received a response from him. So I am now following the chain of command and asking the Board of Ed to please provide a quantitative response as to where the additional 31 students will be coming from. And this is a critical issue because it impacts administrative spending, academic spending, class size planning, and compliance with state spending cap per student. As many of you already know, there's now a second petition that's being circulated and it's by the kindergarten parents to address the issue of class size. Currently, the plan presented at the last Board of Ed meeting is for there to be 24 students per class in first grade, while there'll only be 13 kids per class in the seventh grade. The parents are asking for this to be addressed and will be sending the petition as they collect more signatures. They only started yesterday and have 50 signatures already. I'm asking again that a quantitative rationale be shared for where these 31 new students are going to be coming from. Secondly, I wanted to give you an update on the Climate Survey and Virtual Access Petition. We are continuing to collect signatures for this position and so far we are at 194 and counting. I want to acknowledge that the board cannot force the administration to do the climate survey, but I will keep asking the administration to do it and will keep collecting signatures. That being said, I do know that the Board of Ed has the power to allow virtual access for Board of Ed meetings and I am hoping that you all will have a discussion about it and consider it. I'll close by sharing a few letters that I've received as people have responded to the petition. One person wrote, "As a mom of young kids, I would love the virtual option." Another person wrote, "Hello, can you please add my name to the petition? I'm a Booton township resident. I'm also a teacher in another school district and they do annual school climate surveys. It's a wonderful idea and I think it's very helpful to get the pulse of the community. And with so many extracurricular activities plus work, virtual board meetings would be a blessing." Another former teacher, Debbie O'Connor, whom most of you know, she was a science teacher here, she heard about our petition and asked if her name could be added to it. Another person wrote, "Please add my name and my husband's. It's hard for us to get to meetings and the virtual option would be great." And finally, one of my favorite ones, "What would be the reason for not doing a climate survey? What would be the reason for not doing a climate survey?" So again, on behalf of almost 200 people, I'm asking the administration to do a climate survey and for the board to consider adding virtual access to board meetings. We understand that you don't want people to be calling in and as part of the petition, what we've said is people will email their questions in advance so that it is a controlled situation. I don't think that these are unreasonable requests. I don't know if you or Dr. Angelillo would like to make any comments?
No, not at this time, but thank you very, very much for your, for your comments on the many, many topics. Thank you. And does anyone else for the public wish to address?
Sure. Nora Pascarella, 12 Dogwood Lane. I have a question with regards to the bus routes that I understand they went out for bid. Have there been any modifications with those bus routes that went out for bid as opposed to what the existing or the exact routes that are done this year went out for bid?
I believe they're the same routes.
Okay. Can you, can I ask why there hasn't been a review of them and adjust them basically on usage and numbers on the bus?
I believe the, the, the school district is always, you know, looking at the routes in the ridership. Depending on the routes offered, we have to provide a certain number of seats regardless of whether they're being used.
That I understand.
And all that, so, but they, you know, they do review them and discuss them from time to time, for sure.
Okay, but you didn't this time off, right? You just sent out the bids as existence?
Yeah, yeah.
So then, has there ever been any consideration, I mean, especially since the rising cost, to basically just do what's required within what is now the two-mile radius and let everybody else walk? Or I, I mean, when I see the number of cars coming to pick up anyway. Or drop off. Or dropped off. And then you look at the buses leading here and I under, and that's why I say, did you ever think of dropping it? Because I know you can't, you've got to get it, you have to assume that every kid who's entitled has a seat on that bus. So I understand why you can't just blanketly say, well, one bus services. But perhaps at this point, since there's so many people that choose to bring their kids, drop it both ways, and you've got like five, six buses rolling out of here with two kids. I mean, better to save money on the routes and put it towards your other projects, which seem to be more pressing or at least have need of, that services everybody. I mean, is there any thought process to that?
The last time I know that that issue had, arose was when we had the budget failure back when budgets were.
Yeah, but you're not going to fail a budget because you do all you can to standard the truth you said, so you're not forced to go do that look, see. You kind of manipulate and I understand because that makes sense. Why go through the head it? But is there a thought process to, to think about that? I mean, I guess depending how the bids come back, to really be, hey, you know, people aren't using it and we're paying for this. It's, it's really painful to see six buses rolling out of here with two, three kids on them. So if you go back to that two-mile rule, I don't even know what it is, one mile, not sure what the regulations.
Two miles from an elementary school, two and a half miles from a high school.
I mean, experiment one year, see what happens. Maybe it'll make people use the bus, I don't know. I mean, is there a thought process to, to try it?
Well, it's always something we can consider at any time, honestly.
Will you consider it?
Absolutely will, will, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also just wanted to add because we did discuss it in committee. That the commission who handles the bids also takes a look at the routes.
Yeah, but they don't know the town, they're not going to come and ride the routes. I mean, they don't know Birchwood's, the bus stops five times on Birchwood. No, they're not going to do that.
Anyway, no, thank you. But, you know, I understand and I was here when the budget failed and we went, you know, we had to, you know, one of the, the only item we could, the large item that we could eliminate was courtesy busing and ended up doing subscription busing at that time, but it was, depending on the ridership.
Hey, if you pay for it, you might use it.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate the, that comment. Is there any other questions about any item at this time? Okay, if not, I do believe we should go into closed session for one item. Or actually, if we're not there yet, we have all this concerning all this is the committee board.
I'm, can I ask, I have an old, and I know you said you sent an email, but the only thing I can ask when we're going to have this type of 6:30 start time is maybe a reminder, I don't know who else maybe missed it, but, and I don't even think we talked about it at the last meeting, remember the next meeting's going to start at 6:30? And am I the only one that missed it? Because I had no idea that the start time tonight was going to be early until I got the notice from the Board of Ed office.
Yeah, I did send out an email last week.
So I missed it. That's fine. I would, I'm away.
And I know when we scheduled, you know, when we scheduled the release first this year, also when we did the budget, the budget thing, you know, I think the topic came up and we also, I already knew at that point too, I don't know if it was mentioned at the meeting, but.
All right, when's our next one, though? We have one.
Next one was going to be May, but it's going to be instead be June.
That one I know, yes.
The mid-June meeting is the next time. Yeah, so we can anticipate a 6:30 start until then. So there's the early May meeting for the budget, I think, at 7:30 and then mid-May. The two May meetings should be 7:30. But I can, when we do have a change notice, we send it out to the paper or the association board members.
Well, that's, that's what I got and that's what reminded me.
The change, it's not the agenda, it was the change notice. Last week, because we had so many, we had so many committee meetings scrolling about, like, you know, and folks were probably wondering when, when did we meet, when are we meeting? I had sent out an email that said, here's, the committees already met before spring break and they're just before they're meeting the last two days, you know, then I, at the end I had put it in. Like, do a separate one, I guess, with, you know, maybe the, the heading, you know, maybe that would be more effective. You know, I could do a separate email, you know, if we do that again, I'll put a separate email where the subject line is.
Oh, the river. I, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, catches the attention, I understand that.
Is it on your website?
Yes.
We got an email earlier this week about it, but it's not on the website. Yes, yes. But then we got done a little bit early and we started our meeting.
Yeah, but, but I can definitely, that, that probably be helpful because I, I, I understand, trust me, there are many things going on, but I understand. So what I can do is do a separate email, you know, that sort of, you know, that in the future. Also, I think in large letters under the subject line, I know they go out to the board and we'll just put in meeting change notice.
board meeting, they just put in a meeting change notice, so that, you know, when it pops up, you read that first.
Yeah, yes, yeah, because my, truth be told, like, you know, that email, that it was, the reminder was in, was about, you know, committee meetings on the board meetings, so I understand.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Can we make sure, post it, you're supposed to post it on the website.
Yep, but I will do that. Is there any other old business to come before the board?
I just, I have something else to bring up, and I didn't want to answer to the public during public comment, but I feel, I guess I owe an apology for being on the board, and this is my 12th year, and I feel that I just am not living up to your expectations. And it may be my opinion, and no one else is on the boards, but, and I understand with your comments, and it's a public session, you can say what you would like to say, but I don't think you've really come here at all without concerns, that you think we sit here and volunteer our time, and don't think about anything you're saying. And it's a little offensive. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
If everyone else can sit here and take it, and take it, and take it, that's fine. And my term's almost up, and that's, it's a very good thing. Because I feel like we internally think about the best thing for the children, and think about all kinds of things in our committees and everything else. We don't do everything right here. And it is a perpetual, I feel sad that you, as a committee, as a public member, feel that every concern you have, you have to go get signatures from the public. That that's the type of board we are, that you need to go get signatures from the public.
Thank you.
And perpetually put it on Facebook about your petitions, and what they're for, and what you're advocating, what the flavor of the month is.
Okay. Is there any other old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board?
I have new business, actually. So one is, we talked about governance, and just something to think about as a governance committee is an option. I think Barry does a lot of maintenance, and like, running, and a lot of energy on a lot of the administrative side of what we do. And so, I mean, there's certain things that we can be helped, that we could be helpful to help us run more effectively, and I think you've said that you've seen it in the past.
She wrote her presentation from two years ago.
From two years ago, see?
Yeah.
Well, actually, and that's one of the things, someone who will help collect Charlene's presentations, and keep them at a place where we can refer back to them, to help maintain the scheduling, help with the scheduling. I know it's very tough now with so many people working during the day, and, so I think there's just a lot of things that we could do to support Barry that can be done by committee, you know. So it's just something to think about.
Are you on governance, or the policy?
I'm only on, on long range planning.
I might be Jonathan, because I did save a planning committee form, and I put it, I told Jonathan to take a look at it, because it's something that we could, by a month, just kind of say, like, May or the budget discussion.
Oh, that's.
January or. Reorganization. I think it was one of the meetings had at Morris County School Boards, it was offered as a, like, a file.
Yeah, New Jersey School Boards has a, several things, but they have this great two-page document that has, like, what you, you know, what the board should be focusing on.
Yeah.
To make sure that you don't forget.
There's two, yeah, there's two versions. One's very detailed, and one's a little bit higher level.
Yes.
And maybe a first stab at it, especially for the public, would be helpful, that we just kind of outline what we talk about, you know, like, May, June, we do certain things that we don't do at the beginning of the year, et cetera. And just kind of outline. Landing starts, and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it would, they wouldn't have to meet that frequently, but a place to sit down and have a conversation about how are we running as a board, what could we be doing better, did we want to have a buddy for an, a new member, you know, to answer questions, you know? Just all kinds of, just something to think about for the future. And then, on the issue, on, I feel a little bit differently about the, so I'm thinking as new business for the virtual meetings. It's been put to us, it's been asked, it's been signed by a lot of people, and I think that we should, probably, I would prefer at the next meeting, have a conversation about it then, and just vote on which way we want to go. You know, it's fair to have an honest conversation about it, some people made it forward, again, I still feel like I need to do more research. I saw, I've only seen one district that has a virtual meeting that allows people to participate[1700.02]